Welcome to another edition of Connecting the Dots. I'm your host, Liz Miska. And today I have two staff members from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, Emily and Tyler. Welcome to Connecting the Dots.
Thanks, Liz. My name's Emily Glovitz. I'm a principal planner at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and just happy to be here today to talk with you.
Awesome.
I'm Tyler DiStefano. I'm Assistant Transit Planner in the Transportation Department of CMRPC. So Emily and I don't really see each other every day, but this is a good opportunity for department collaboration.
Wow, yeah. So how are your roles different? How do you two intersect?
Yeah, so at CMRPC, we're pretty much broken into two departments. So there's transportation, which I'll let Tyler talk about, but my department is the Regional Collaboration and Community Planning, or for short, RCCP Department. So we have a whole host of projects that we work on with our communities. We serve the city of Worcester and the 39 surrounding towns, so the southern, kind of two-thirds of Worcester County. So primarily what I and my colleagues work on is housing planning, economic development studies, like village center studies, master plans, so like long-range planning. How do you want to see your community in 10 years, 20 years? Let's see. A lot of green energy and sustainability, resiliency planning, community development block grant, CDPG, helping with those processes. There's just so much we're working on.
Right, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
And how did you ramp up to all that? I'm gonna give you a chance, Tyler, but I mean, how did you become proficient to be able to hit all those notes on the, you know, like, did you know anything about these things? And how do you acquire that information?
Yeah, I kind of just learned on the job, really. I mean, I did go to Clark and I studied community development and planning there at their master's program. So I definitely have a background in that. But I've been working for CMRPC for about seven years now. I started as an intern and been there full-time for about, yeah, six years, I would say. So really just learning as we go. My boss, Janet Pierce, our executive director, just, she can't really say no to any project. So if a community comes to us and it's like, "Hey, we have this issue. We'd love to work with you on this kind of plan." We'll do it, yeah. So sometimes we're learning as we go. Sometimes there's projects that we're very proficient in and we've been working on a long time. We know exactly what to do. So it's a little mix of both. Every day is really interesting. Every day is different in the projects that I'm working on. Sometimes I'm at my desk doing a lot of phone calls and emailing coordination. Sometimes I'm out in the towns, doing public outreach. We do a lot of like surveys for our communities, a lot of like public forums, quite a bit of, you know, research, data analysis, GIS and mapping, and really taking all of that and putting it together into a future plan for a community.
Interesting. Tyler, what about you? It sounds like you're on the other, you're on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah. I think transportation is kind of its own little world. So we get a lot, I think differently from the more like municipal-based projects. We do work with a lot of municipalities, but we also receive federal funding for transportation planning. So each metropolitan area, I think over 50,000 population, there'll be a designated metropolitan planning organization for that city or that, I guess, metropolitan area. So CMRPC is the Designated MPO, is the acronym, for Central Massachusetts, or at least the, I guess, the southern part of like,
Those 39 towns?
Worcester County, yeah. So that's our, CMRPC region is kind of aligned with the Metropolitan Planning Organization region. I mean, originally, so after like the highways kind of were developed in the 50s, they started implementing the MPOs as a way to facilitate public involvement in federally funded transportation projects. So that, let's say, "Oh, we want to put this highway through your house." Like now you have, you have a way of like expressing that, "Hey, I like, maybe I don't want that to happen." But there wasn't really a mechanism prior to the MPO for people to really do that. So I think, I think like public involvement and equity is kind of embedded in metropolitan planning and also transportation. There's a lot of, you know, environmental justice and we talk a lot about equity. And I think, I think like part of that is like disabilities and people with sensory impairments is kind of integrated in transportation. Because while we might feel very siloed in our department, I think it's very intersectional with housing, economic development, land use. So I think it's really important for transportation planners to kind of have a wide sweep of skill sets. I think for me, I didn't, I kind of fell into planning because I wanted an internship when I was in high school, I think, or maybe early college. And I landed at like a regional planning commission. So that's how I found out about planning. And then kind of just, it was kind of always in my tool belt. Like it was a data collection internship. And then I was always interested in cities and like, kind of like the complexity of them. So I kind of just kept that like common thread throughout school. Like while I was studying other things, I still wanted to incorporate like my skill set into planning eventually. Because I've also worked at like nonprofits and things like that. So the thing I like about planning is that you can kind of go wherever you want with it. Like it's really, if you want to emphasize accessibility, you can, you can kind of be the steward for that, for that area. You can be like the accessibility guru, I guess. But everyone kind of has their niche within planning, I think. And I think that's like the strength of it. It's like we can really diversify and specialize because planning is such a broad discipline, I would say.
I want to, I want to ask you about the exercise that I had you participate in. But first, just a question about the metropolitan areas. How many are there in Massachusetts?
I think there, so there's like regional planning commissions. So New England is a little different than the rest of the country because as you probably know, like we're very municipality-based. So like when I was living in Colorado, they had Dr. Cog, which is like Denver Regional Council of Governments. So I believe that was like their MPO for like the Denver metropolitan area. But more county-based, while we are kind of more town-based. So I think there's about, I think there's about 15 regional planning commissions in the, in the state of Massachusetts. And then the tricky part is the regional transit authorities, I think there's probably about the same number in the state. Their boundaries don't always align with the planning boundaries. So say for the W, for the Worcester Regional Transit Authority in Worcester, they have, I think, about 37 member communities, including like fixed route and pair transit. But they may serve a town outside of the CMRPC planning region. So there is a bit of like, maybe collaboration and overlap.
Overlap and, but a gap, potential gap too.
There, I think on the, kind of the boundaries of the, those kind of imaginary lines, as you say, that like the member community boundaries, basically, there tends to be more gaps. And I think, I mean, the plan that I've been working on since I've started here was kind of identifying those gaps for older adults and people with disabilities. So I mean, one of the gaps is, I think this has been identified probably pretty frequently through public involvement and other plans. But the, the gap in just regional connectivity has always kind of been an issue. And for example, the kind of the Blackstone Valley region of CMRPC tend to, tend to be, they're on kind of the outer edge, but also they're not members of any regional transit authorities. So that is one of the, kind of one of the gaps that we look at when we're saying like, "Oh, should, like, does the community want this? Should transit be expanded here? Is there a need?" So I think a part of planning is like kind of, it's always identifying a need. And then when you have the plan, it's really up to the, you know, the nonprofits and the community to be those implementers. But planners can always facilitate that process. But we don't really have the implementation teeth. I think that maybe people think like, "Oh, planners have all this control." But really, we don't. Really, we're just kind of aggregating information.
Yeah, right, right. And will it ever, will it be shelved? Will it, will it be implemented? You know, are there the funds? Is there the will? I mean, there may be will by certain, you know, certain parties. But again, I'm just likening this to the law. Sorry, because I am a lawyer. But also, when I was, when I was in law school, I was, I went nights, so I worked full-time and I worked at the courthouse for a land title. So that title examination. So when you buy a house or sell a house or buy land or whatever, you have to have a title search done. And so, you know, so the town, the towns could be, Worcester County was, and I don't remember how many towns, but there was Worcester South, which is the, which was the county seat is Worcester. And then there was Worcester North, which was Fitchburg. And it was like five towns, like Lemonster and Ashburnham, et cetera. So in your description, I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, yeah, you had to know all this stuff." Because it, you know, it doesn't make sense, you know, to a layperson. It's kind of like, "I don't need to know that. I just need to know where do, where do I go for help?" And I remember looking at like highway locations. If we were doing a title search and property had been, you know, a highway had gone through there, so they would have been a highway taking. So you had to filter that in so that the property owner might have less land because his land was taken for a highway taking or whatever. So it was, you know, you were delving into all different areas. But then you got the people who were like, "Yeah, I need the services from this town because I live, you know, part of my property, my house is on one town, but, but, you know, but the access is through another town." And where are you going to get like services, like the fire department or whatever? It's like, "Yeah, you're caught in the middle." And that's what made me think in terms of transportation too. That if you, you know, you're the last house on the, on the, you know, the school bus route, but the school bus doesn't, doesn't go that far. The bus, the public bus doesn't go that far. Well, you know, you can see it, but you've got to step over the line or in the case of pair transit, you've got to live within that certain area. And if you don't live within two miles of, you know, of a public route, sorry. It's like, "Sorry."
It's even less than that, actually.
Yeah, okay.
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile, okay, right, three quarters of a mile. But anyway, it's just going back to your equity, going back to the equity.
Right.
So again, that's fascinating to me because when you, when you were both talking, I'm thinking, "Yeah, this resonates in my mind about, you know, like a dilemma." It also, the dilemma of this may be academic or theoretical. And are you, are you dealing with people who are outraged or frustrated? Or, and how do you, you know, have you had instances like that? I mean, Emily, you've been there for a longer time than, I'm assuming than Tyler. But have you had a dilemma that you've been able to solve?
I don't know about being able to solve.
A troubleshoot.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of what I work on is, is housing plans. So encouraging communities to rethink what they want their existing housing stock to look like. A lot of our small towns have just a single-family home housing stock on a one-acre, two-acre plot. So is that really meeting the needs of everyone? Is that an appropriate form of housing for everyone in the community? Is it affordable?
But do you get pushback?
Yes. It's just trying to get people to rethink what, what opportunities for future land use are out there. If there's vacant parcels of land or if there's buildings that could be redeveloped into housing. Think maybe like an old mill or an old church that's, that's underutilized. Are there spaces where we could turn this into housing that would meet the needs of everyone? Because we know there's, there's such a housing crisis right now. There isn't enough. Housing is unaffordable. We're encouraging communities to create more transit-oriented housing. So housing that's located near bus stops or train stations or just near sidewalks, near services or municipal buildings to be really integrated into the community. So I definitely get some pushback from people who do not, they're averse to change.
Yeah.
They like how their town's been.
Exactly. It's been great for me and this is where I want my children. And but now, Tyler, I'm just thinking, when you were saying, when you were in Denver, you didn't, you didn't have, you didn't have a car. So, you know, so you weren't living necessarily in the posh neighborhood or whatever. You weren't, you know, you weren't. But if you wanted to go someplace, it sounds like you availed yourselves of the resources. You knew the buses. You knew, you knew how to get there. Again, I just think human behavior is just so interesting because people are like, "Oh, no, you know, well, that's okay for those people. Well, not for me." You know, and, and, you know, "I've lived here all my life," you know, "and now you're telling me that, da, 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 da." Does that sound familiar?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, but getting people to think, "Okay, will you be able to continue living in this town the rest of your life? Are there, you know, senior housing, assisted living facilities?"
Those are for the old people. Come on, Emily, that's for old people. I'm not gonna get there. Exactly. Again, you're bleeding into, into my, into my realm, you know? It's kind of like, "I'm an elder law attorney too." People are like, "Oh, well, no, I, you know, I don't want to go to the senior center. That's for old people." Or, you know what, you know, vertical access, you know, like, telling somebody, you know, "It would be better to have your bedroom downstairs in what traditionally is your living area because that's where the bathroom is." Hello? "Oh, no, well, I've always climbed the stairs." Yeah, well, that's, that's risky. It's risky when, you know, but going back to the change. You know, you don't want change. Sorry, not to cut you off, but Tyler, you want to weigh in on this? Do you see this as well in the, yeah, in like, "Oh, well, why do we need people?" I'm just thinking, friend of mine who was also a client and in her 80s, we drove up to Rutland last year to go to a restaurant and there were bike lanes. She's like, "I don't, what are these bike lanes? This is dangerous. People shouldn't be on them." You know, it's kind of like, "Okay, but who are you to be the authoritarian on, you know, what, whether people bike or walk or ride?"
Yeah, I think, I think we have such a bias towards short-term thinking. And like as planners, like we are trying to look, you know, we're planning 20 years ahead or with transportation, you know, they try to plan like 40 years ahead. And highways really only last 40 years until they have to be repaired again. So to me, I'm like, "Well, upy 40 years, you kind of got another chance at maybe improving." And, you know, in Massachusetts, I think I was reading something the other day, like second worst American city for traffic in the country. And a lot, a lot of that has to do with,
Most expensive housing wise, no. Third in the country.
I mean, Emily's working on housing plans, but then the first thing people think of is like, "Well, how am I, how am I gonna get around?" So I think, you know, everyone likes to bash on the American city, American urbanism because we're so car-oriented. But that is, you know, the way that our cities have developed, for better or for worse. And I think, I think instead of kind of, you know, hating the system and wanting to overhaul the system, like a lot of, you know, a lot of people do, at least like more progressive, like people that just kind of like want to live in a downtown area, especially like young Gen Z people. They want more amenities, more walkability, more bikeability. But a lot of us grew up in the suburbs. So it's, it's definitely a big change, I think, at least I'm kind of seeing. I think people, it's hard really to kind of understand the entire system and kind of who gets to make those decisions. I think with Massachusetts kind of implementing the MBTA Communities Law, there's a lot of local pushback. The state is kind of, you know,
Tell us what that is. Tell us what that MBTA.
Yeah, it is, it's basically just kind of an upzoning mandate, I guess you could call it. So any, basically like any MBTA community, a community along the commuter rail, communities that kind of are adjacent to the commuter rail need to kind of upzone their development. Basically, let's say it's zoned for a single-family. They need to like upzone that to be a certain density to increase housing availability. But a lot of towns don't think that it's the prerogative of the state to kind of mandate that because zoning has always been up to the municipality. So this is a big change. And, you know, the state, I think, politics and planning often go hand in hand. And I think politically, people are saying, "Wow, Massachusetts is so unaffordable. Like I can't afford to live here as a young person." A lot of people can't. Boston's, a lot of studies are coming out that Boston's going to be losing, I think, like a quarter of their 18 to 25-year-olds within the next five to 10 years, something like that. Like young people are leaving the city. So I think the state wants to increase housing stock. But then people, I think, like to have their space. They like to have not a lot of neighbors. So I think it's kind of who bears the burden of density? And should density kind of be evenly distributed among communities? Should it just be kind of concentrated in more urban areas? That's kind of the question. I think historically, there's been the suburbs and then there's been, you know, the city, the inner city. And I think we're kind of approaching a point where they're mixing more and there's a lot of conflict between, you know, ideas of the suburbs and ideas of the city. So I think, I don't think it'll resolve anytime soon. There's definitely going to be a dialogue, which we're gonna see play out.
Hopefully dialogue, not, not loud, not loud talking.
Yeah.
You're making me, you're making me think as well when you're, you know, that the urban versus the suburban or rural, the, the car versus, you know, the other forms of transportation. Bring it, bring it back to your experience of going under blindfold. And so was that your first experiences of, you know, assuming the role of somebody that, that you're not because you're, you're both cited individuals? Can you relate that to your, to, to what we're talking about here? That, you know, like your perception of, "Oh, this is what blind people do." Or "This is what blind people don't do." Or "Black people go here," or "Black people don't go here." Does that resonate with, with either of you?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, it was quite an experience walking around a place where I had walked many times and just kind of having a completely new concept of what it's like to be in a place. Whether it was the sounds, the textures on what I was walking on. Yeah, it was, I definitely take things for granted just being able to walk from point A to point B, no problem. But just every little part of getting around was needing, needing to touch things to feel, "What is this? Is this a door? Is this a pole?"
Doubting, 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 like, "Is this really what, what they're telling me it is?" Or, "Really, does this feel like this?"
Yeah, exactly. And just, just kind of having that mental map, creating that was totally different for me. So it definitely, I have now, I can't stop thinking about it, honestly.
Music to my ears.
Yeah, it's been so interesting. And just thinking about kind of the recommendations we make in our plans and, and accessibility of like, we do a lot of public outreach in our agency. So just rethinking like, "Okay, are these meetings, are these surveys really accessible to every person in the community?" I haven't quite thought of the, kind of the answers to that yet about how that, how to really reach kind of people in every corners of the community. So welcome to any questions.
Well, don't worry. Again, I'm a resource. I remember, Tyler, I want to hear from you too. But then I want to, I want to double back to Emily because Colleen was, was guiding her and we had her feel a relic from the past on Shrewsbury Street. So, but first I want to hear, I want to hear from you, Tyler.
Yeah. I think my biggest takeaway was when I would tell people what I did with you, they were like, "Oh, like, were you scared? Was that dangerous?"
And you're like, "It was dangerous, but I was protected."
Right, but it's like that, that's your lived reality. That's your lived experience. People who have mobility impairments, they also like, like have challenges with the accessibility infrastructure, like, is it sufficient? I think just when I had my blindfold on, just like kind of the sense of like fear kind of from the uncertainty. Because I think, I think we're so used to being lazy, having all that visual information all the time where, you know, when sounds, textures, they, when you don't know what they're coming from and when you don't have that full picture, my mind kind of seems to think of the worst scenario. I was like, "I hear a car and I think that car is coming for me." Because you don't really know if it's coming for you or not.
Can they see me?
I think even at the crosswalk, you might have, you know, a beeper. But I think, I think people still, like, people who are blind, they would still be scared, like, because they don't really know if the car is going to stop. They don't know if, you know, that car is just, you know, stuck right in, in the middle of the crosswalk and then, you know, you'll walk right into it. Some cars, you know, do that. So there's just a lot of questions. And I don't think, unless I was very familiar with the route, I don't, and I don't think I would go out alone.
Right, and that's, that's what happens. You avoid the situation and you make excuses as to why you don't go. And to your point, it can be very familiar, but then change something up, you know? Put, put construction fence up. That happened to me when I was, this is way before COVID, but I was, I was a member of the YWCA. And they were doing, I went in to work out. I came out and around the library, they had put up chain link fence. You know, and I was kind of like, "Wait." And I'm going boing, boing, you know, off of this stuff. Like, "What, what happened here?" You know, like, I go in, you know, I'm in there for two hours, then I come out. And I actually made friends with a DPW worker. He would, he would, his name was Steve. I still have him in my cell phone. He's like, "Liz, if you're coming down here, you know, call me up and I'll guide you around everything." Because the, the concrete footings would stick out into the sidewalk too. So that became a tripping hazard. So I mean, again, it's like visually, it's kind of like, "Oh, I know how to avoid that." But non-visually, you know, like, "I am going to encounter that." And again, that could be, that could be deleterious to my health, as they say, so.
I think it's part of like a larger conversation too because, you know, we have a heavily aging population, especially in Massachusetts and New England in general. And it's not just blind people. It's, you know, people that are developing vision loss from aging.
Or hearing loss.
Right.
Or, or mobility issues, frailty, you know, tremors, all of those things. I mean, and that's, again, that, these are the reasons that I do what I do and that I'm, I'm such a proponent, thank you for saying that, a proponent or an advocate. It's not about me. It's about, it's about everybody. Because, you know, as human beings, we're all going to age. We're all going to age and we're all going to suffer some kind of physical and potentially mental infirmity during that process. So, so making things more, more accessible or inclusive or listening to, you know, to people and not just saying, "Well, that's not relevant to me." Because that's what I hear, you know, particularly with housing. It's kind of like, "Well, you know, that, you know, like, I've got mine. Like, you know, I'm fine, you know? What if you can't drive your car anymore and you'll live out in Timbuktu?" Okay? And that's, there's that much, you know, further, you got to go, go to get services. Again, we need to think much more communally rather than independence.
Right, systemically. I think if you're living in a small town that doesn't want, say, more housing, more density, eventually, young people will stop moving to your town. The tax base will go down. And then people start leaving the town and the town becomes, you know, desolate. There's no jobs. There's no schools. You need, you need revitalization. So I think you kind of need, you need that regeneration. You need to think proactively so those things don't start to happen. New Hampshire is one of the oldest states in the country by median age. And, you know, we have a lot of single-family housing. We don't have a lot of density. So, you know, one of our challenges is also housing and also keeping young people in the state. There's literally nonprofits devoted to keeping young people there because we have such like brain drain almost everyone. A lot of people go to Massachusetts or they'll go to Portland or they go to Burlington. No one really sticks around, unfortunately, in Manchester. I think that's changing, but,
But slowly.
Slowly. And I think, you know, we kind of have to think proactively about those things so that we experience less short-term pain than more long-term pain.
Well, unfortunately, we are at time. I know, wow. But I really appreciate, again, your insights because both of you are going to be leaders in this, you know, in this planning and, and living it as well. So just keep, you know, keep reminding yourselves and delving into these areas where, where um again, you can you can be change agents and and, you know, uh absorbing the lessons that you are learning from, you know, from your own experiences, from your, you know, from your roles at CMRPC or wherever you go, and from other people that, you know, genuinely want to, not not just fight you, but but want to, you know, be partners with you, like me. Oh, thank you, thank you. And thank you for being, uh you know, thank you for joining me today. Join me again for another edition of Connecting the Dots.